We've called on one to order. We'll open the Washington County Board of Canes Commission meeting for today, July 15th. For everyone, please stand for the indication of our pledge.
Please beg him. The board, thank you for this day and thank you for the blessings of this day. Thank you for being a heavenly gracious father, mercy and grace. Be with the ones in our county family and residents that are going through tough times, illness. Pray for speedy recoveries. And we just want to thank you for letting us have Washington County as we have it today. It's a true blessing to be able to live here. Pray for good, good reading and give these commissioners knowledge and wisdom to make good decisions for the people of this county. Jesus name and prayer.
Amen.
Pledge and see the flag, and then the United States of America. In the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Guys, we want to thank everyone coming out the gates and in the business of Washington County today. At this time, I will take a roll call vote, or roll call for the president. Mr. Kent?
Here.
Yes, Mr. Kent. Mr. Bush?
Here.
Mr. Hawkins?
Here.
Mr. Abbott?
Here.
Mr. Joyner?
Yes.
All right. Just for clarification, Mr. Joyner joined us by the following day. If y'all will, please keep Mr. Joyner in your prayers. We've had great news and we're expecting God to continue on healing and with a complete healing and ready to see him back here in living color. And we appreciate you and we're praying for you, Mr. Joyner.
Thank you, thank you.
At this time, our first word of business is we have two public hearings today. Our first public hearing is the CDVG CV grant, Ms. Karen Shaw.
Now, good morning. Before we get started with the public hearing, I want to share some background information with you. Washington County submitted a CDVG CV pre-application to the Department of Economic Opportunity back in March. And during the application review, only two issues were discovered and both are currently being addressed. One of those issues involved the advertisement of our first public hearing in March. That meeting was required in order to submit the pre-application. The required advertisement was omitted from the local publication and our attempt to rectify was, was not successful either based on the fact that we thought was a five-day notice. DEO saw it as a four-day notice and they win. So, but no worries, DEO is there to help us and they're going to help us fix these two problems. And with that being said, we're having our first public hearing now and that signing sheet is on the table in the back of the boardroom if anyone wanted to comment during this public hearing. I've got a little bit I need to explain about it and then we'll take comments from the public. Okay, the CDVG program, that's a community development block grant coronavirus, is designed to help a non-entitled municipality or county prepare for, prevent, or respond to the health and economic impacts of COVID-19. The county is eligible to apply the neighborhood revitalization, commercial revitalization, and housing rehabilitation categories and in the economic development category pursuant to the coronavirus aid relief economic security or the CARES Act. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development allocated additional CDVG funds to the state of Florida to address issues related to the impacts of COVID-19. Each activity must meet one of the following national objectives for the program: must benefit low and moderate income or LMI persons, prevent, eliminate slums or blight, or address community development needs with particular urgency because existing conditions pose a serious and immediate threat to the health and welfare of the community for which other funding is not available. A need is considered urgent if it poses a serious and immediate threat to the health and welfare of the community and has arisen in the past 18 months. A minimum of 70% of all CDVG CV funds must be used for activities that meet the low and moderate income national objectives such as LMI area of benefit, LMI limited clientele, LMI housing, LMI jobs, slum and blight area basis, slum and blight spot basis, and urgent need. Eligible activities include acquisition, public improvements, public facilities, business assistance, micro enterprise assistance, public services, planning and broadband planning and public infrastructure. Under the CARES Act, funding is available through the Community Development Block Grant Program for activities which prevent, prepare, and respond to coronavirus pandemic. The CDVG program will be funded through three rounds of funds received from HUD for a total amount of available funding of $41,931,595. Funds will be awarded for eligible activities following a competitive application process in which we're now in. Applicants may submit one application for one activity with a minimum grant request of $200,000 and a grant request maximum of $5 million. So, at this time, we would like to take comments from the public and I believe we had two sign up on our signing sheet. Mr. Gary Hartman was our first. Would you like to speak on that?
Mr. Gary, did you want to address the board or did you want to address the CDVG CV? I think you may want to address the board, is that correct?
I was just signing in as a participant that I was here.
Okay.
But I'll be glad to say something if you like.
That's okay, Ms. Hartman, you're more welcome to interject any way you feel free.
It's just basically opinions or comments on how you'd like to see supply for CDVG funds.
Yes, as many as we can.
If there are no comments, I would like to ask the board to approve utilizing these funds for our broadband internet initiative.
We will get, we'll enter that once we enter our agenda item.
Okay.
But absolutely, you know, at this point, we're citizens, you know, we're in a public hearing, so there's no project greater than right now the need of Washington County is to have available broadband throughout the county for children to be able to study from home, whether it be a patient from the hospital, be able to tell medicine. There are so many positives and very, very, very few negatives that could be going on with this project and I'm looking forward to the continued fruition and looking forward to seeing the county one more notch in our belt for economic and growth. Hartman? Yes, sir.
No, I will comment. I'm in absolute support of that to get started as soon as we can.
That's the whole initiative that we have for here. So, I'm looking forward to it. Any other comments or concerns from the public?
I'm just also happy about it for the home-based businesses. I mean, there's a lot of rural businesses and I mean, it's just a win for everybody. It really is.
Any other comments or concerns from the public? Yes, sir, sure.
I signed the paper.
Yes, sir.
You may comment on that.
Absolutely, yes, sir. Yours next.
You have a paper, right?
Yes, sir.
Where I signed it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I just have a couple of questions on that estimate on that grant. What was the total amount of the grant? The total amount?
Forty-three million, I think is what it said in here. Let's see.
Forty-one million. But, Ms. Shepherd, don't get confused, that's not forty-one million coming to Washington County.
That's not coming to Washington County. That's the total amount that's available.
That's available throughout the state.
Well, explain it to, explain it. You want to come by your office later and explain it to me?
Sir, yes, sir. I'll sit down with you after the meeting.
Nobody else probably interested in that. But I'll come by and you can explain how much it was and where its wall go to, where it's supposed to go.
That's right. And we're just.
Now, which one was this now? Which one is this right here? Is this one here?
No, it's a public hearing. It's not even on this.
No, this one right here.
We're not in the meeting yet, no, sir.
No, I understand what you, I'm speaking, I'm assessing you for the.
Okay, that's a different item. That'll be coming up later. That's not this item.
You didn't speak on this right here?
I'm going to speak on it again. We have two issues we have to address, so.
Okay. Well, that's the total amount. Don't be talking so fast, don't you get me off.
I'm so sorry.
Okay, now, the one, oh, you, we're not talking about this right here.
No, sir, that's, that's not up yet.
Paper, you're not on the paper yet, are you?
No, sir.
No, sir. If you have any questions about the CDVG.
This is just the CDVG. And I'll be.
I'm coming by the office to straighten it out there.
Yes, I would gladly be talking to you.
Appreciate you, sir. Any other comments or concerns for the public about our CDVG CV? There are too many acronyms in here. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll close this portion of our public hearing and we'll open our next public hearing, which is the Sunny Hills MSBU ordinance. Mr. Matt, if you can play.
Yes, I'm reading the titles. An ordinance relating to the provision of public services and facilities in the Sunny Hill Oak Hill Municipal Service Benefit Unit in Washington County, Florida, amending section 54-151 of the Washington County Code of Ordinances, providing definitions, amending section 54-153 of the Washington County Code of Ordinances, providing legislative determination of benefits, amending section 54-155 of the Washington County Code of Ordinances, providing for establishment of budgeting and expenditure of assessment monies, amending section 54-156 Washington County Code of Ordinances, providing for determination, effect, and collection of annual assessment, governing boards or resolution establishing assessments, adopting a new division two in article four of chapter 54 of the Washington County Code of Ordinances, authorizing imposition and collection of service assessments against the property within Sunny Hills/Oak Hill Municipal Service Benefit Unit, establishing the procedure for imposing service assessments, providing that service assessment constituted lien on assessed property upon adoption of the assessment rule, providing that lien for service assessment collected pursuant to section 197.3632 and 197.3635, Florida statutes, upon perfection shall attach to the property. On the prior January 1, the lien date for had the law on taxes, providing that perfected lien shall be equal in rank and dignity with the liens of all state, county, district, or municipal taxes and assessments in superior dignity to all other prior liens, charges, titles, claims, providing procedures for collection of service assessment, provided for applicability, providing that this ordinance is an alternative method, provided for interpretation and effect, and providing for an effective date.
And now you know why I have Matt read that. Thank you, Ms. Reed. Is there any comments or concerns from the public on the MSBU ordinance? Board, any comments or concerns? Hearing none, we'll close this portion of our public hearing and we'll move to adopt the agenda. I do have two additions that I see. I did not see the MSBU ordinance on the agenda anywhere for adoption. Does that just?
We need to add that.
Okay, I'm adding that. And also adding approval of poll borne at EOC under myself. Is there any additional items that the board sees that need? And I would like also move negotiation of contracts to align with budget restrictions to the FEMA coordinator for explanation. And that would be about three quarters way down your page.
Repeat?
Negotiation of contracts to align with budget restrictions.
Oh, okay. So, we're moving it from?
From there.
An agenda item.
To FEMA coordinator, that's correct. Any additions or subtractions that the board sees fit at this time? We're just adopting agenda, Mr. Shepherd, right now.
I have an addition that I want, want to.
In order to put an item on the agenda, you will need to present it two days prior to, you can discuss it.
I thought you were accepting them, no, that's all right.
Of the public participation portion. All right. Seeing none, I set the motion to approve. Some movement, Mr. Shepherd? I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All opposed, motion carries. All right. Next item is to adopt the previous board minutes. We do have one correction on the board minutes from May the 20th, 2021, and we have the board minutes for approval for June the 17th, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve? Some movement, Mr. Shepherd? I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, next item is the non-agenda audience. Do we have the list from the back?
There is no one signing.
There's no one signing it?
Oh, I'm sorry, there was one, Mr. Sheffield.
Okay, Mr. Sheffield, yeah, okay. Mr. Sheffield, you come to the podium, state your name for record. Mr. Reed, can you elaborate on our public participation for the three minutes?
Yes, sir, Mr. Sheffield, this is a provision where members of the public are given an opportunity to be heard before the county commission. Each member, each individual should be given three minutes to speak on item of proposition before the board. This isn't a time for public inquiry or public attacks on the board members, but we welcome your participation here today.
Mr. Shepherd, state your name for the record.
Thank you, sir. My name is Simon Sheffield, resident of Washington County. Any more information?
No, sir. Could be anyone.
What I'm concerned about is we're having so much rain and everything and the holder ponds, we need to check the holder pond, have the engineer or whoever it is, or the water people, whoever to check these holder ponds, because the holder ponds are not, not doing what they're supposed to do. The water's coming down on people's homes, on my home, in the street, and washing the street out and everything because the holder ponds are not, not holding the water like it's supposed to. Okay, that's one issue. The other issue is about the roads. The roads and that issue, I have a letter here that I'm mailing out. Keep one of y'all considering, take a minute for me to pass it out to you. I couldn't read it, but I want to take up the time because I know you've got a job trying to run Washington County. Especially Mr. Trey, he's got a big job, he's a chairman of both.
That's right.
I understand that. He's got a big job running Washington County.
Thank you. Thanks, sir. I'll pass one to Mr. Rabbit. I'll give one to Mr. Rabbit. Sir.
Thank you, Mr. Sheffield, I appreciate it.
All right, just thank you. Do I have to give a?
No, sir, that's what you want to give, sir, or give it to.
You don't want the name of the organization that I represent or nothing like that?
No, sir, I don't need it, but I do appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I do appreciate the letter, Mr. Sheffield. Seeing no one else signed in for the non-agenda audience, we'll move to the agenda. Request forbid amendment, not a budget amendment, we've been bidding out way too much stuff. Request for budget amendment, Mr. Carol Rudd.
Good morning.
Good morning, ma'am, how you doing?
I'm good, thank you. This really shouldn't take long. I sent a letter out on July 1st that we are experiencing a shortfall and tentatively we need $38,500 to finish out the fiscal year. And that is largely in part to the fact we had an unprecedented turnout. We spent almost as much money on the November general election as we did the PPP and the primary combined. We had a turnout that was unlike nothing we had seen in Florida and most of the nation experienced. We did ask for reimbursement where it was applicable through CARES and we did receive some monies through that budget and unfortunately we had to return some because we just simply couldn't justify what was caused directly as an effect of the pandemic versus what was just public interest. We had a heavy interest in this past presidential election.
Rich, what was the total on the postage?
Four thousand.
So, do we, you want us to just take that out of that amount?
Depending on if you want me to pay it directly or?
Just want to take that?
Take it out.
Okay, take it out and then send the remainder. So? Because that is included in thirty thousand.
It is not. No, we didn't, we didn't have the postage, that was, the bill for that was mailed to us after we asked for the amendment. It was mailed within a few days afterwards. So, we had an additional $4,027.80. We sent the amendment out on the 1st and on July 8th, I got an email saying that we owed an additional $4,000 for postage.
So, the budget amendment would be for $42,528.80 then to bring you?
Eighty-seven, eighty, yes, that's correct.
I didn't see that letter come out to us first.
It was sent, it was just posted, I just emailed, copied, they copied me on for reimbursement from Mr. Rudd's office. For postage.
And I just want to remind the board, as we're working on our budget, we should be able to submit that to you tomorrow. Judy and I were discussing it this morning, that we have continued to cut everywhere we can cut, but we're just past a time we can do that and provide safe elections for the public. In 2017, 18, our budget was about $50,000 more than it was last fiscal year. So, we have, we've done, we've been very mindful of the monies that we have been allotted over the years.
What year was that, Ms. Rudd?
2017, 18.
Yeah. Okay.
But with, you know, with cybersecurity, we've been working with Georgia Florida Alarm and with our cybersecurity team from the state. And again, I just remind you that we do follow the homeland security now and it's, we're going to have to have security on every door when we get to the Ag Center. So, just be heads up when you look at our budget for the next fiscal year.
And I wish I wasn't brought up like that because that's not necessarily the case. The budget may have been $50,000 short, but the money was offset by the monies that was not returned to the general fund.
I'm talking about 2017, 18.
Okay, yes, ma'am. And that's, yes, ma'am, I got you, that's still the case. Oh, 2017, 18, not?
Right.
That is still the case, that is the case, that's where, that's where it started. But that's here or there. Do I have a motion to approve? We have to, we have to figure out how to fund the supervisor relations where they will have to come from. We got it in the general.
I mean, I'm sure.
Yeah.
But we'll have to definitely get what areas, you know, we're going to be able to pull from.
Yes, ma'am. We'll, we'll get the money to pull it together and we'll report back to the board with the email from Ms. Bell where the money's come from. Is that sufficient to the board's?
It, it, just.
Okay, you might move. Do I have a second? No, second. Motion, a second, any discussion? I have a motion, a second.
And can we just quickly try to get an update on our office space?
Those finish the motion, please, ma'am.
Okay.
I have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Massey can refer to the, I think he was prepared or what I talked to him a little ago yesterday about the move.
We wait to hear about the insurance company on a timeline to come in and, and repair the floor on that side. I have not got a firm date from the beginning, but as soon as I talk to them, and I will try to talk to them today, I'll reach out to you and let you know, try to give you a better timeline.
Because it doesn't affect the whole space, so, right? Is it just into the hall?
It doesn't.
Yeah, okay.
And, and I have requested for them to start on that end of the building.
Sure.
So, we can go ahead and proceed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rudd, appreciate you. Okay, next item on agenda is the LAP supplement agreement, a resolution offered road paved shoulders resurfacing with Karen Shaw.
I'm back. Okay, so you have in front of you, if you remember after our last meeting, we awarded, or you awarded the contract to C.W. Roberts for the offered road project, contingent upon getting the DOT contract price meant. And we did, DOT approved our request and they have added $325,000 to the project. So, that makes the total project $2,553,464. So, we need to gain just approval from the board for their resolution, authorizing the attorney and clerk to sign the supplemental agreement.
So, move. I have a motion, do I have a second? A motion, a second, any discussion? I'm ready to get this project going.
We almost there.
Any other discussion?
The total amount was 250,000.
Mr. Charles, you repaid the amount for Ms. Sheffield?
Sure.
Mr. Charles, 300 additional 365.
They added $365,000 to the project.
So, the whole total amount was 250,000?
That's the total amount of the project's $2,553,464. Adding some paved shoulders and paving the whole project, helping pull progress.
Sheffield, can you deal with the total? Hearing no other discussion, all in favor, aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Next item is to approve financial managed sheriff, or financially managed sheriff's office tower grant, Ms. Shaw.
Okay, this is a request from the sheriff's office. They received a $600,000 grant from DEO to construct a communications tower and this request is just that we will financially manage it. They'll take care of everything else, all the, all the deliverables and everything, we're just going to financially manage it.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw, for taking that burden off. Do I have a motion to approve? Some movement, Mr. Shepherd? I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye. All opposed? Motion carries. This is going to greatly increase the radio coverage and no doubt for, for the whole county. Next item on agenda is urgent need resolution for CDVG CV, Ms. Shaw.
Okay, I remember when I mentioned earlier that we had two issues with our DEO review, our application for the CDVG CV grant. This is the second issue and it's simply that we had to pick another national objective. Our poverty level as a county as a whole is not high enough to meet that poverty national objective. So, we're going to go for the urgent need objective, which requires a resolution approved by the board and that resolution there is attached.
Mr. Shepherd, Ms. Karen, would you, would you explain that?
Yes, basically, when we got our review back, we submitted our application, they came back with the two issues, one being the first public hearing, the second one being that our national objective didn't meet. Our poverty level is not high enough, believe it or not, to meet that third objective that we had chosen. So, we ended up talking to them on the phone, Jeff and I had a conference call with DEO and they were explaining it to us. Really the only thing that we could go for, for broadband would be for the urgent need.
Okay.
And so, they told us that what we would need to do that would be a resolution, board action to declare this project as being an urgent need. And it certainly does fit the definition of urgent need.
Okay. Somehow rather, do we need, we didn't absorb that first time you said?
And I have a copy of the resolution here if you don't have it in your packet. I think you do.
It's, do you have it? I think you backed up some, wasn't it? Ms. Reed, do we need to read this by the title?
No.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution? Some movement, Mr. Shepherd? I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay?
Thank you.
The next item on agenda is EMPG ARPA agreement for 2021, 2022, Ms. Connie Welch.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Gentlemen, this is, all three of our grants is our normal annual grants. The EMPA, which is the Emergency Preparedness Assistance Grant, it's the same amount as it's been in the last several years, it's $105,806. We match it with our local funds. The next grant is the EMPG, which is the federally funded emergency performance grant. It's just slightly higher this year than what it was last year at $43,852. It's matched by our EMPA grant.
You think them separate?
Yes, those are separate.
I make, I make a motion that we pre-approved the version there, the EMPG ARPA agreement. Do I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll say.
Motion, a second.
We'd like some discussion.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah. It's going, who are we using to, to help us put that together, the package together? Not the grant package, but the actual?
The state sends us the grant agreements.
Right.
And then I'm the one that takes care of the grants on our side.
But now, this is where we actually take our emergency management and we update it each year. Our protocols and all are correct on that one?
Well, this really covers salaries, salaries and benefits is all we use these funds for.
Okay, okay. Any other discussions?
No. I just wanted to know what else I could do.
All right. No, no other discussion? I'll set the motion, all in favor, aye. All opposed? Motion carries. All opposed, motion carries. All right, Ms. Welch. Uh, next is the E P, or E M P G agreement for 2021, 2022, Ms. Welch.
Okay, I kind of did them out of order, I'm sorry. The E M P G is the, the federal funded agreement, which is forty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars. Uh, it's just slightly more than what it was last year by about fifty-two dollars.
Okay.
Chairman, I make a motion that we, we accept this.
I'm saying, I'm going to have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next is the E M P A agreement for 2021, 2022.
That is the state funded agreement, which is, um, matched by our local funds. The grant amount is a hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and six dollars.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve this.
Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Motion a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Welch.
Thank you.
These three grants is grants that we, that we approve every year.
That's correct.
It goes to funding that, that operation that they have down there.
The E M P A and the E M P G are grants that we get annually. The ARPA, the E M P G ARPA grant is a new grant this year. Last year we had the E M P G S, which was a supplemental grant for COVID. And then this year with the, uh, hang on, let me get my notes out, because I don't want to say it wrong. Um, it, the E M P G ARPA grant is from the American Rescue Plan Act that the president's put into effect this year. And it's a small grant, it's only thirteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars.
Thank you so much, Ms. Connie. All right, next item on agenda is the Economic Development Plan, Mr. Ted Ever.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, how y'all doing today?
Good, sir, how much so?
I'm fine, thank you very much. Has Jim called in yet?
He is not on.
Okay, um.
Oh, Ted.
I'm sorry.
All along, brother.
Head on, it's going to be a ride. That's quite all right.
Coming down, the money's coming down.
Um, so really, the only thing I need today is to talk to y'all about, and I've sent this to Jeff some time ago, and have talked to y'all about this. But to finish up the, um, site certification, I am going to need the funds that I have given y'all today. And we have paid for everything up until this point out of our E D C budget. But I do not have these funds to pay for these, and these have to be done to finish the site certifications. So, we, uh, we ask that that be taken from the, uh, the hospital money that's been earmarked for E D C. And, um, if y'all approve this, I'll be on the phone today ordering all these, uh, all these things to be done. So we've done Phase One, we've done title work, we've done, um, survey boundaries, um, and a few other things, but minor things, but. This is from right here.
Okay, here you go, got this right here. There you go.
No, no, it's okay. But, uh, as you know, site certification is something that, uh, is very much needed. Most companies now are looking for certified sites, and the reason being is, and I've explained this before, but it's always about the time to market. And any large company would ask for these things upfront, and if you had to tell the company that we'll get that done within a year, year and a half, they're gone.
I got you, no doubt, we, we've asked you to get the site certified, and y'all have done those diligence and really been, managed to pay for it up to this point. So the total remaining balance, uh, has.
That's what I have right now. Now, one of these, uh, the cultural resource assessment may, uh, may trigger something else. We've got part of the wetlands delineation done, clipped at that with under Project Pipe. But some of these could cause something else. And, uh, again, we started remediation on some hydrocarbons that were found out there next to the new pole barn. And, uh, we excavated about a ten by ten by seven, uh, foot hole. And, uh, Mr. Massey took some more samples, we should have those samples, uh, in, in the results this week. But what he was telling me, and I was on site when he was doing it, is he thinks that he got most of it, but the test will show. And then he was going to put another couple tests on some old pits that were shown on LIDAR, but so far he has found nothing out there. So, we, I think we're in pretty good shape. I want to say thank you to Jeff Massey, because he made that phone call to waste management. Uh, depending on the soil and what the testing comes back, it could have been that we would have had to ship the soil to North, uh, North Alabama. But, uh, Jeff talked with the chemists that works for waste management, and so all that soil that will have to be trucked off just goes to Campbellton, and that's going to save a lot of money.
On Campbellton Highway, so can't have for no better.
Yes.
This, this.
Chairman, get us on track here. Okay. All right, the, uh, the total, the total cost of the, uh, funds requested for the site certification, to finish our site certification is forty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty-four cents. Do I have a motion to approve?
Another question.
You asked to get it on track, and now we're backing up. I thought we were actually talking about the, uh, the economic development plan, we're, and now we're, we were.
Well, there's, there's several things, but this is the first one.
Right.
I gotta get, I gotta get the money so I can tell these guys to go to work.
Well, we got three things, the best I can tell on these.
Yes, yes.
The plan.
Mm-hmm.
The disbursement.
This is, this, this is the only thing that needs to be voted on today. I was here to answer any questions, I've talked to all y'all about this. Um, so let's finish this, and then I'll address this.
The, the plan is just for informational purposes, this, this is, this is the only thing that needs to finish out of our agenda item today.
Okay.
And the disbursement.
The disbursement, that's under made, that's oversight and last year's budget.
Uh, for what the request was from the Saturday night court. We approved fifty thousand dollars, it's actually seventy-three thousand dollars for Holmes down Washington County. Holmes put seventy-three thousand, Washington puts fifty thousand, because that was the number that was related to me through G D, C D?
G S G.
Yeah.
And the amendment was actually for seventy-three thousand dollars, so that's got nothing to do with that.
That's, that's not my wheelhouse.
This is a project pipe certification. I understand that, but that's not the way it's listed on the agenda.
Yeah, this, this.
On the agenda, it says the economic development plan.
Right.
It doesn't say anything about site certification.
Yeah, well, this is.
Funds request.
Yeah, this is part of this plan.
That's where I got mixed up.
Sorry about that, Ms. Welch, my apologies.
Talking about this.
Okay.
Mr. Evans, do you have a question, sir?
Yeah, on this, this wetland delineation, I, I thought we, Cliff had already had that.
Yeah, he did that for the area that Project Pipe was on.
Okay.
They had seventy acres, you got, you're going to have a two hundred acre industrial park when you buy the county, I mean, the city's land back. So, we needed to do all the wetlands delineation, because that's coming back to us, y'all have already bought that property. And so, when you do the site, the wetland mediation, you do it for the entire site.
So, so there's additional property that.
Yes, yes.
Okay. I wasn't aware of that.
Yes.
All right, so what I have, the promise is this here, what, this way, the forty-four.
Yeah, and I had to find the two guys who apologized for mine, but I was, I probably was under this as well. I'll, I'll make a motion, I mean, we've asked him to get this site certified, and so we can, so we can market it and bring in some, bring in some business. I mean, uh, along there comes, comes additional funds, and I'll make a motion that we approve this forty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty-four cents.
Second. No, a motion, a second, any other discussion?
I just tell Ted he better not come after anymore to get this certified.
I will try that too, but I can't make any promises, I'm being straight up.
I have a motion, a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Trevor.
Yes, sir, and on, on this, what I would suggest is, we have been, I have talked to y'all, Jim Towne and Terry and I have talked to y'all about this, a ten-year strategic plan. I just wanted to give it to you today. I think it's, uh, as you know, we've delved into this, it's quite, uh, it's, it's, it's going to be a busy ten years. But what can come out of this is really a strong growth plan for the county. This is actually going to be following up on the last ten years strategic plan, uh, through the M O U that you did with the E D C. All of those things that were, um, told us to do for the last ten years, all of those things have been checked off. So this plan is going to take what we did the last ten years, and then move that forward. And eventually, as you know, uh, we're heavily into the grant business starting around 2025. So, um, what I like to do is just tell y'all that y'all noticed this, this will be what I think the M O U will be based on between the E D C and the, in the county. And so, that's all I have to say about that, and, uh, that's all the business I have.
Thank you, Mr. Trevor, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Uh, next item, uh, is the inmate medical provider contract renewal. Uh, it's the same one as we have in the years gone by, uh, with Sam, Samuel Ward. I will withstand revoting, uh, due to my wife does want to do facilities, I don't have the years gone by, so if we can get that one to sign. Do I have a motion to approve? This is a two thousand dollar a month. For the.
Any increases?
For the inmate?
No increase, but for the inmate. I'll make a motion, we approve it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four, oh, with Commissioner Hopkins of the state. Okay, all right, uh, next is the pre-upped income insurance renewal rates for 2021, 2022. The total was three point nine percent increase. Uh, we worked through it, uh, we've received two hundred and.
Two hundred and sixty thousand?
Sixty thousand.
Back.
Back. Our total in, from the insurer for us being fully insured to the consortium, consortium. Uh, this year's total increase would be a hundred and six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars to the, to the board, with no additional increase to the employees to keep their, uh, insurance rates as that same from this year to last year. And that's pretty impressive.
That is very impressive.
It is.
Guys, do I have a motion to approve?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion a second.
I have one more question.
Any discussion?
How much, how much money are we trying to, uh, to put in the pool there, to, to cover the fluctuation?
I don't think there's a particular dollar amount at this point, even if we take on this increase, um, we'll still have a good cushion. If we had a bigger increase next year, three point nine percent is a, a great, um, you know, renewal rate. But let's just say next year we have like a six, you know, or potentially even eight, um, percent, then we do have some cushion there to take on at least the board's portion, which is the majority of the.
Yeah.
Rate, so.
So there's not a specific number we're trying to reach, go.
I don't think there's a specific.
I'm, I'm happy with that, I'm, I'm happy with the.
Our goal is to every year not have increasing employees, and that's why we had the cushion for it. Absolutely, I agree. So, that being said, the consortium is working just as we had planned. One of the best ideas and decisions the board made to do this, and I do appreciate this, guys, and the, and the employees do. The rates went down and their, their coverage stayed the same, we're better.
Chairman Hopkins, I, I think we owe you the, the, you know, the thanks for this, you take it, you know, by the horns.
It's the boards and city guys, we all sit together, I appreciate the support, though. But, uh, do I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. All right, uh, we moved the next item underneath, uh, the FEMA coordinator. Next item is the Saturday night corridor dispersal amount of the twenty-three thousand, seventy-three dollars. Guys, that was oversight on my part, uh, with last year's budget, we allotted fifty thousand dollars, uh, for the Saturday night corridor, and it was actually supposed to be seventy-three thousand dollars for that year's, uh, investment from Washington County. Uh, so I would, uh, ask the board to, uh, for us to correct my, my failure, and, uh, increase the budget amendment to the Saturday night corridor, additional twenty-three thousand, seventy-three dollars.
And this was to match what Holmes County.
Matched, yeah.
Misunderstanding, I'll make a motion, we approve this.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Motion a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item is trim rate tentative millage hearing dates for September the sixteenth at five oh five. Do I have a motion to approve the, uh, millage hearing?
Sixteenth to five oh five, can we all look at our calendar?
She sent out an email to everybody, we had some stuff that was completed, and so she moved the date a couple times, so I think this, everybody should be good on the.
Okay.
Does everybody deal with that date?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was to, to miss the, the Gulf Power Symposium and.
That's right. Be the day after you come back.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we going to hold a special, we can still address the rate? Leaving it the same?
Yeah, uh, according to the ARPA, or that, that, that squad will have to do this year, do we need to do it today?
Yes.
We need to do that today?
Or, I mean, we don't do it today.
No, 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 I want to, I want to, is the board prepared to move forward with this, as, as they see?
I am.
Okay, I thought we'd do it today, do we have the, uh, do I have that?
It's in.
Do I, is it in my packet?
It should be marked.
Ms. Rachel.
I do, I do have it.
Using those dates we got, we'll get in, we'll, we'll be able to do both of them in time? The tentative and the final?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Guys, uh, the Albor, let's see, I would ask for a motion to leave our current millage rate as the same as it was last year, according to the ARPA plan, that, uh, any tax, any military dosage would, would be a cost. And correct me if I'm wrong, anybody in the room, Mr. Parker, Mr. Massey, and make sure I'm right on this.
Five million.
Uh, what was the total we're getting from the American Rescue Act?
Right at five million, two point, uh, four point nine million.
Does that exclude the rollback?
That, that excludes that. We, we can't, we can't use the rollback rate.
There's terminology in the act itself, and the words preventing that to lower your, your tax rate or tax revenue to access that money.
Revenue.
So, I, do I have a motion to move forward with our current rate at eight point five million?
I don't see where we have a choice, Mr. Chairman, five million dollars versus five hundred thousand, I, I don't see where we have a choice. As much as we all, our goal is to reduce taxes, this grant, five million dollar grant, four point nine, is, is preventing us to, to be able to do it for this year and next, is that correct?
That's right.
I have a motion, and do I, do I have a second? Motion a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Did we get that one on the three day?
Yes, we did, uh, for six, uh, for, uh, September sixteenth to five oh five. Uh, next item, uh, on the agenda is the pole barn for E O C. Uh, Mr. Massey has worked with a contractor on pole barn, and they negotiate the price to come within budget.
I don't have that.
I, I have that.
Okay, go ahead, you go ahead, Mr. Massey, go ahead and read it.
No, we, as, as the board recalls, we, uh, had bids for the pole barn constructed E O C. We, uh, went with a low bid, and in my discussions with them, the price has changed, it has come down. Uh, the, the prices, uh, for everything is sixteen thousand dollars. And I just need the board to approve that, so we can go ahead and, and begin the party.
Do I have a motion to approve? I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Motion a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item is the A M S P U ordinance, Mr. Shepherd, do you need to read that by title again?
No, sir.
No, no, do I have a motion to approve the A M S P U order that we had a public hearing on earlier in the day? I have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, I appreciate it.
Mr. Jordan got a list of stuff he's wanting to do down there.
Yeah.
Can we move the property next to the Ag Center up now, since we have Judge Wells here, rather than have it fall up a bit to last?
Absolutely, absolutely. And it's not often that we get to see Judge Wells in the crowd, and it's very, very pleasing to see him here today. And, uh, I, I'm very proud to see you here today, and I'm very proud to be able to do what we're interested to do to get this property secured for Washington County, or if we do, uh, to be sure that we have the additional parking for our resurfaced, refaced, uh, Ag Center, and looking forward to many more years of use. And we appreciate you offering the property at the discounted price to the county for the betterment of the county, Mr. Judge Wells. All right, go ahead, uh.
You just need a motion to probably purchase the property as it is.
I'll make a motion that we, what was the, I don't have, I didn't have the final price on the. Forty.
What was the total price, like?
Forty, forty-five thousand.
Forty thousand.
Forty-five.
Forty-five thousand.
Forty-five, yeah, I have much of the purchased property.
This, this come up two months ago, and, and I had asked not to hold, hold this project up, I had just asked for an appraisal. The appraisals come in, and we're not giving more for it than what the appraisal had requested, and I'll make a motion at this time that we, uh, purchase this property from, from Mr. Wells, uh, for the, for the price of forty-five thousand dollars.
Second. I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Judge, our record lunch is on you today. All right, uh, it's, we're, we're fixing to get into the FEMA coordinator's portion of it, and that's why it usually becomes pretty long, this is four, uh. Let's take a ten minute recess, and we'll reconfigure in ten minutes. Let's take a ten minute recess and we'll reconvene in ten minutes.
That was carried. I got it. We'll bring this meeting back to order, please. Mr. Kevin Parker, let's take the coordinator.
Good morning. Good morning to all.
Good morning, sir.
I'm gonna try to be shorter than normal and quicker than normal, and I'm gonna try to speak more plainly. And I apologize to my minute takers because sometimes my professional English does not come across and get recorded in the way it may need to. So that's on me. So when she puts something in the minutes that's not just right, it's probably because she took it from me and didn't understand what I was saying. Several things I'm gonna touch on and try to be brief. I do need approval on some items. I'm gonna start with the Pine Ridge Drive mitigation project. It's the section down there flooded. We've had it designed to bring that road up and rebuild it, add a couple culverts, replace a culvert, add another one, and then rebuild the driveway adjacent to it. We've accepted bids on it. We feel like there's some items within that bid that's a little bit high that we want. My request to you is to approve this bid with the approval of the chairman to be able to negotiate a couple of these rate items and see if we can get it down a little bit. It's just a couple of things that's out of line. The actual amount was two hundred seventeen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars.
Was that the bid price or was that?
That's the bid price.
What is the budget amount we have for that?
About a hundred ninety thousand.
So we're trying to get it in.
Yeah, we're trying to get it closer to budget, yes, sir. And a lot of that, you got rises gone up in time since this budget was created two years ago.
All right, guys, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Motion and second, any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. All right.
If you, sure you remember, I think it was Tuesday of this week, we accepted bids on like eight roads. There were Peel, Earl Gilbert Tool, Cheverie, Coon Hollow, Trail, Hartzog, Waller, and Laster. We had four bidders. The low bid was GAC contractors for two million, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and zero one cent. I would recommend that you approve that contract so we can move forward with those rates.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Now I got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion?
Well, they range from four million and some change down to two million, nine fifty-six.
That's right.
We're getting better and better.
If we are.
Each road zone.
We are, we are. You know, we've done a lot of work to get these, you know, these contractors in here.
I have a motion and second, any other discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
The, you know, each month we are putting out for bid, receiving bid. This next month is actually, it's gone in now. If it's approved, it'll be in Saturday's advertisement of the paper. The next group of roads is Houston Road, Hard Labor, Buddy, Duncan Community. All of those are in road zone two point four. And here's the good thing about, I know you wanna hear, we're actually moving into the next road zone, which is three point two. And, Andera?
Andera.
Andera, Territory, Hicks Lake Road, Hicks Lake Lane. Those will be the next group to go out Saturday with your approval.
Do I have a motion to approve the roads listed, just listed by coordinator Parker?
I'll make the movement, we're right on track with our plan, yes.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second. I'll give you a steaming.
I have a motion and second, any other discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Kevin, do you think we need, you've already spoke to commissioners a little bit, I think, about how we're going to fund the roads as far as the RFAs and RFRs?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so they're aware of it. I just wanted to be sure.
Because this is the time where it's going to get very, very important that we dot our i's and cross our t's with our clerk's office to make sure that we are doing this in the timely, most considerate to our budgets itself, so.
And you're still meeting with the.
We're meeting, yeah, we're meeting at two o'clock. So everything's on track, but it's just that this is the time where it's gonna be the most stressful time of the project, when we start putting asphalt down to make sure our funds are staying where they need to be.
You're gonna see tremendous increase in our monthly going outs.
Yeah.
I mean, you're talking, that's three, the other one's like a million and a half, and I'm throwing out a number.
And then two point nine.
Yeah, so what you're gonna see is that's gonna go up tremendously just to pay those. But we're gonna work through those, yeah. We, the next group that we're actually, that's under design now, is the rest of them in three point two, and then we're moving to five point two. So those are already in the design process, now getting ready for the following letting or advertisement. The surveyors are finishing up right now in two point, four point two and one point one. That's the ones that'll be the following group. So you can see there's a tremendous wheel that's out there turning in the background that's coming. We've got, our goal is to put out around eight or ten every month. We're trying to produce fifteen a month. So we've always got extra. We've got about ten or twelve roads that's designed right now that's sitting on the shelf, if you will, that's to the side that we wanna hold on to for future stuff. So the process is working. The rates are coming down, and I'm gonna get into that in a minute, of what we're trying to do. And when I say we, I'm talking about Mr. Massey, Chairman Hawkins, and the group trying to figure out how to get these in budget and get them down. It's been a tremendous effort because we saw prices double when we started this. And that's a tremendous amount of money to be coming back to y'all in the end. We're trying to look at what's gonna happen at the end, we gotta get there first. So we're hoping, and we're seeing it come down a little bit, and once they get more competitive. This week, we had four bidders, we had three bidders that attended the meeting, which that right there tells you they're starting to get interested, you know. So that part's going good.
Kevin, if I could ask, when we're in there surveying these roads, surveying them out, and are we running into issues where people has fences and stuff on the county road and that sort of stuff? And when we find this, are we addressing this at all?
We're not addressing it because we're assuming what's there is what's being maintained. Now, we all know over the years that maintenance has come in some, so we're allowing a couple of feedback there that's truly maintained right away. And there's roads that's tight. You know, some of these roads is about to go out, it's tight. You take Duncan Community and Hard Labor.
Well, I've got one in particular that, and maybe we should talk about this off session, but.
Okay.
Like it's in the process of being surveyed, and it goes down to the end of a road. And when the trash truck and people gets twisted around on the wrong road, they're having to pull into somebody's property, and there's adequate room to like do a little cul-de-sac where we could... Is that, is that an option?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Well, I can tell you, and as probably as I just mentioned, some of those roads were designed three and four times to tweak that right away, because they start out with what the surveyor gives them, and then they go and look at that spot and say, well, surveyor actually could have picked up another foot, or the survey was right, and they had to tweak everything to get it in there. But those areas, and I got another area that should have had a cul-de-sac in it, we're gonna address it during construction. So there's some latitude there that we can do and.
Just for clarification from the board, this is something that just always drives home the fact that we spent fifteen million dollars or whatever we spent thus far on this project. If we don't mitigate the roads, pave the roads, we, that money is returning. So this whole project, to get it to become to fruition, make sure that we have the hard surface on mitigation of the roads is a necessity, it ain't a luxury. These roads have got to be mitigated.
Right.
At whatever cost, that's why we're working so hard to make sure our budgets, stuffs are staying in budget.
And on top of that, following that up, remember, we accepted a fixed cost offer.
Yeah.
So whatever we go over comes back to us.
We've.
So at the end, we're trying to keep that down.
I'm just telling you, when we're doing these negotiations and asking for this and doing different reasons, it's not because we want to, it's because we got to keep this in budget if we don't.
Life's easier if we don't have to do it, but we do, just to keep it in some kind of a budget. And I think we're getting a lot of cooperation in that. This is a huge project.
It's monumental. I don't know how, Kevin's a good project manager, I've known that for a lot of years, back in the D O P days. But I still don't know how he can keep track of all the projects he's got going on.
I got good people. I got good people.
But one thing, and I am blabbered because we've had all these discussions, more especially in this last week, but I'll ask Johnny and Danny to be very vocal in areas where they see we need to replace culverts or add.
Headwalls. Yeah, add culverts.
Especially where we need to add headwalls, because there's no use in putting a pipe there and not put a headwall on it, because all you're gonna do is lose your road. But we've talked about all this, and of course, the other thing, and I'll ask the board to take this into consideration is we get some of the monies that are coming in from years past, our legacy monies as they're coming in, that we go ahead, put those monies into our road bridge department to where they'll have monies to help supplement these projects to keep them going.
Sure.
And not just put that in.
Very, very good point.
In general.
Absolutely. We got six hundred thousand coming in?
Mm-hmm. We're expecting that, I would say in thirty to sixty day range.
Does this wind us up on that legacy?
No, we got, that leaves about seven hundred thousand left. We got one point three, one point six.
If we could use those monies to help keep going with putting our headwalls on. I talked to Johnny, Johnny just said he lost another person. The one thing that Johnny and I talked about a couple of weeks ago was trying to get on these projects and do a brush cutting before we repave them, where you're getting brush cut and all brand new asphalt. And we thought it might be included in the clearing and rubbing old projects, and it's not. So that's another thing that somehow or another we need to stay ahead of these projects is doing our part to prep the roadway for the project.
Sure.
Because it's not in there. And then another thing I'll share with y'all that Kevin and Jeff and I talked about yesterday is going in and adding, and we think it can be done, is adding a pay item to the two contracts we have that are putting headwalls on to do some type of sod or grass seed, something. You gotta have some handwork.
Yeah.
And you gotta put some sod down or hydroseed or do something, because all you're doing is losing everything you just put in on these headwalls when you don't stabilize.
Right. Well, there was a couple of areas that they've come back and done that, with some specific needed stuff, but.
Yeah, I agree, I couldn't agree more. We just need to, we need to focus on those, getting all those areas, those pipes replaced, those headwalls on, and getting them grassed and seeded, ahead of these projects. Because we don't wanna go in there and.
Start disturbing it.
Yeah. And cut the road and cut it up to replace a pipe, when we could have replaced the pipe ahead of that.
And what we're doing now, when we get a set of plans about done, they'll print a copy for me, I'll get with Johnny. Johnny goes out and looks at them. If the pipes are fine, or just a little bit of settlement in it, he leaves them. If the pipe's starting to rust, beat up, boogered up, whatever, he'll go ahead and replace it. So we're trying to do as much of that as we can. It's trying to get out, and these critical ones now, still do the headwalls, you know, as we go on those so that we don't have to come back. The grassing situation is really on anything that's skewed, because we know on our paving project, they're gonna put a strip of sod on each side, but they're not gonna go far enough to cover that headwall. So plus, it may be six months behind it, you know, in our work order before they get out and grass it. We need to do something to stabilize some of these that we're doing now.
And our contractors working well with us with that.
Yes, yeah, that's just something that I think I can negotiate with them and say, I wanna put, you know, I don't know how much it'll take, a third of a pallet, you know, maybe put a half a pallet on both sides. You know, we hadn't gotten that far as far as calculating what we really need, and it's gonna be different. Some that's skewed may take more, some that's just, you know, right there, true cross drain.
Well, and even with some of this, I mean, we've had record setting rains as well.
Oh, yeah.
When we go in there replacing culverts and setting headwalls and, you know, you're, with the wet concrete, your limits as far as the backfill and that sort of stuff, with everything being fresh. I mean, we're having to come back and readdress some of that, and the contractors are, I mean, it's a big deal. But we've had some, these afternoon thunder showers turned into some pretty big.
Yeah, they're doing an excellent job in coming in, dressing up. When they finish, what happens is a week later, we've had two or three rains, and it doesn't like anybody did anything.
No.
Okay, let me get clarification from the board, because what I want to be sure that we're, I'm getting the correct way to move forward with this, and have Mr. Parker, is the legacy funds that we want to move to road bridge for earmarked for headwalls or culvert replacements.
Whatever, whatever we need to do to supplement our contract.
Okay, because the conversation come earlier in the week about headwalls is that we were replacing all the culverts on the road that was necessary, and there was just a slight few, or there was a number of them that was under the PW for FEMA. So we told Johnny to boot forward with them, continue all the ones that's under the PW. Commissioner Parker was getting the letters, but on the other ones, we're gonna take that out of our legacy funds once it comes in. Because if not, what I don't wanna do is that in the project, we're expecting four twenty-eight number for our cost savings on the project to be able to pay for these culverts. And then I come back to y'all with a million dollar open on this budget, and you ask why, and I say, well, it's from headwalls for culvert replacements. So I want y'all to be aware that some of these culverts are not on FEMA, on the PW, and they're not gonna be reimbursed. But you want to utilize the legacy funds, you want to utilize the legacy funds to pay for it. I just need instruction on that, so we can move forward with this project.
That is my recommendation, is that we utilize what funds we have to make the repairs. If they're not covered in the actual FEMA work itself, that we go ahead and still make the repairs ahead of the pavement.
Okay.
If it's needed.
Let me finish, let me finish this line of thoughts, so we can make sure we're on where. So what I will need from you, Mr. Parker, is a list of the culverts that's been replaced thus far and the headwalls that are not on the PWs and the actual cost. So we'll be subtracting the line item, the legacy monies that we have coming in, so we know what our budget is to continue, because we cannot absorb that in the road bridge budget. Is that, you understand what I'm saying, Mr. Evans? Mr. Evans is about to cry right now, or crying one or two. But what I'm getting at is, and then at the end of the project, if there's additional monies after the paving project is over, then we can move forward with the remainder of the headwalls and culverts, or the headwalls, because the culverts got to be replaced on the road regardless, if they're.
Will the legacy money cover that?
I don't know, but.
We've asked you, Mr. Chairman, with coming back.
Y'all asked me with more than I'll. I'm telling you.
To date, you're doing a good job of it.
But I just need clarification from this board of how you wanna move forward, because I hate to see people ill and mad about a situation that I'm trying to make sure the board stays in budget. So.
Let me say one thing that's kind of fallen out.
If that's the clarification I'm receiving, that's what we're.
I didn't mean to get off on.
No, you're fine, and this is a good discussion to have, because right now, we're trying to identify all those FEMA identified and all critical. Now, that critical can go a long way. I'm not saying, I wouldn't recommend you do ever headwall on ever culvert on ever road. Go on that road, especially ahead of the paving, and pick those critical ones that have water flow. That Johnny and him has a problem with. That's why we're working right now. Then toward the end, take that four twenty-eight, then we can identify, you've got to get approval to move that four twenty-eight money back. Then you've got all these extra ones that you wanna do, then you go back and finish those up. Under Hurricane Sally, I haven't even gotten to that one yet. There's probably a hundred and thirty, a hundred and fifty culverts. Every one of those, we've asked for mitigation on those culverts to do headwalls.
So they're coming up.
So they're coming up. I just don't wanna get too far ahead and get it done, and now I can't get mitigation for that.
Well, I think, I think what Commissioner Bush is saying, and it's on the same thought process I am, that the last thing we wanna do is go in there and put some fresh asphalt down on these roads that ain't never been paved. We're trying to do a good thing. We've got a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty million dollar project, we're trying to, and a lot of this stuff is new to us. But the last thing any of us want is kinda like going through the city of Chipley. You lay down a new road, and then you gotta cut it up because you gotta bust a water line. We just need to prevent this with the culverts and the headwalls.
That's why we're replacing the infrastructure underneath the culvert.
That's what we're all trying to do here, Congressman.
But again, that's why, you got Mr. Evans out riding the culvert. So if you wanna headwall on every culvert, I need that clarification right now, that we're gonna wait and put them on there now and not wait for the four twenty-eight and then the hair to go without a hat. I don't have it all, I don't care. I do care, but it doesn't become over budget. But I want to know how you want me to move forward with this, that if we see a culvert that's got flowing water in it, that could potentially be a washout. We put a headwall on that and use legacy funds, and then in the project, if we have four twenty-eight, when we have four twenty-eight money left over, move forward with this? Or halfway through the project, we look like we're on budget, and we got some closure, we got two asphalt pits in. Or we had pre-asphalt in, we rescinded one, we took one away, we reset the last two. But just give me clear direction so we can move forward for this next thirty days before board meeting of how you want the headwalls and culverts done, so I know, and Mr. Parker knows, and Mr. Massey knows, how to tell our contractors.
Just don't now pace the legacy.
I may have already outpaced you.
And that's what we gotta find out.
Yeah.
So. We've gotta have some sort of, and I heard you say, somebody mentioned to Johnny, take a look. Let's get a count, let's get a cost. And we've gotta have that, I mean, we can't, we can't, we've gotta have a cost. And the contractor needs to know, he needs some instruction on what to do. I mean, is he buying up pipe, are we buying up pipe? Has he got twenty pallets of bag mortar sitting there that he needs to do something with it? He's got to pay for it. I just wanna make sure that we're all having that same conversation, and let's get a cost where we can give you an educated.
I just want, I just want y'all.
I know how hard this is from a paperwork standpoint, when you're mixing funds like that on a project. Where you got Michael paying for this, legacy paying for that.
Sally paying for that.
For another. But with that being said, those culverts that have been identified with Sally funds, can we do those at this time, or are we still waiting for approval?
I don't wanna get too far with telling you that we're gonna get that mitigation. I wanna tell you that we've requested that mitigation.
That's what we fought for, that's why we went to Orlando and met with them before. We got Senator Albright and Congressman Orlando helping us as well to fight for the Sally funds, because that's the letter that Kevin referred to in the past. We spent those probably fifteen hours over the last two months, half two months, on the phone, on conference calls, on Zoom calls, fighting for legacy. And that's where they're trying to tell us they're no longer mitigating our roads because there's no pre-survey, and we're fighting for our road graders, we're utilizing our road grader tracks. I feel comfortable, we're gonna win it. We've got a great team, we've got a great team on our side, far as the state, DEOs bought a hundred percent in, small counties, Eric Poole with FACT, FACT is working with us. We've got a great team working with us to mitigate them trying to take the money from us, but there's no assurances at this time. And my gut feeling says we're good, but I don't want my gut feeling to cost a county millions of dollars either. But I just need direction from the board, and how the board moves the board, that's how I'll, the group that you instructed to spend the funds, that's how we'll move.
I just like the number of what we've already spent on the legacy.
Well, to see how it's going. I don't know, we ain't spent no money on legacy.
We've spent none because we didn't have it.
Well, I know, but what I'm saying is, but I mean, if we're gonna designate it for the headwalls, I don't wanna go crazy with it until we find out how much of that money we're gonna have to use on the part of the dug.
Yeah, and then the other thing is.
I can have that, I can have that number, I can have what we spent thus far that's not refunded yet by next Wednesday. Because I've already got it working on me. That's what.
She's gotta be able to write the checks.
And the meetings with Ms. Bell, you know, the conversation is always is, oh, we're tracking everything, we make sure everything is reimbursable. And up to this point, Mr. Evans was assuming that every culvert he was doing is reimbursable, but it was just, it wasn't the case. But not necessarily that it was his fault, it was, they were needed to be done because they're underneath a branded paved road, and we're not gonna put more infrastructure underneath the road.
And we gotta continue that pace.
And we do, and so I just need to know how you want this group, when I say this group, Mr. Massey, Mr. Parker, myself, and our team to fund this, if we continue to pace it.
If we keep going, let's say the next group of roads we've got coming up that we're about to land. On those roadways, how many culverts beyond what is included in the projects themselves, extra would we anticipate? In other words, some of it's being done as part of the project. So that's the only thing is, I just don't wanna let, some of them are in the project. Those that aren't in the project, that's where I'd like to use the legacy money, if they're necessary. And I don't wanna run out there in the middle of nowhere and put a headwall on something that's never had a headwall and it showed, that has no chance of working its way back to the pavement. Where I'm talking about, or so is where, you know, you've got to edge your pavement, and then you got a headwall. If you don't have a headwall, everything washes off. So then it just roads back until it's under the pavement, and then you lose your pavement. So, I mean, it's kind of a case by case basis. I don't know how we could come up with a true note.
If you'll think about it this way, every culvert that was damaged by Michael has been replaced. Every culvert that was damaged by Sally has been replaced. The remaining culverts were not damaged by either of those events, but because of their age, need to be replaced. So what we're doing now, and that's what Johnny goes out and looks at, is those age quality and then lifetime expectancy, you know. If it won't go fifteen years, I think that's the number he's throwing around. If he don't think it'll last that long, he's replacing it.
And some of these culverts never had headwalls.
Oh, yeah, but most of them.
And the fact of the matter is, I'm putting a headwall on, the headwall's gonna protect the integrity of the culvert over the years, I get that. I just need to know, and the meeting was myself, Mr. Parker, and Mr. Massey, and Mr. Evans was that we wanted all of the PW, continue with the PWs that had the headwalls on and critical, and ones that Mr. Evans felt critical.
I don't.
And that's how we was gonna move forward with the project, we weren't gonna do it on every headwall. But somehow or another, it got interpreted that we was cutting headwalls out completely and wanted to do no more but this, whatever on the PW. And whatever Mr. Evans feels is critical to the future and the betterment of the roadway. But that's all.
And that's where we are today.
And critical is fifteen years or less?
No, that's on pipe, a pipe, life expectancy on that pipe.
We're not talking headwalls.
No. But everything has to work together.
I agree. When are we gonna start putting the black stuff down where we can start getting our reimburse?
That's a very good question. That's a very good question. I have you an answer.
Let's finish one track. Please don't leave this till you give me a direction.
Well, I I'm just, I, this is all going hand in hand because it's going to release cash flow.
That that the cash flow will be released till the last road's paved and and. You don't give me. In everything, then when the last roads and finish this project, that's when you know what 428 dollars you have. If you spend your 428, and I've said this, I don't know how many times, if you spend your 428 dollars prior to that, you're being irresponsible. Because you have no clue what the next road's on is going to come in. It could come in twice the amount. And I got to use the 428 to pay that road because if I don't pay that road, like, all this is paid back.
I'm I'm talking about, I'm talking about the numbers to to get the cash flow coming back in when you're doing the black stuff.
Well, that's that's not going to help you at all in what you're doing right now. That money coming back is going right back to the asphalt.
Yes, we're R F A in it with the stipulation that we're all we're R F A in a request for advance. Is exactly what that bid is. That 2,956,891 dollars, we'll R F A that on that PW. And that's all we're pulling off of it. So all we do is pay our contractor.
Right.
And we could go into a 10 minute conversation on this if you really want to get that even in the weeds on it. But it's very, we spoke with you yesterday, we're R F A in it at a point in the time where we're going to receive it 40 days after the contract. Because the contractor won't invoice till 30 days prior, then we could got 30 days to pay it. So anyways, that that's in the weeds. Just please get finished with it.
Yeah.
Hold on just a minute, Wesley. Johnny, on on the future projects, what do you see that we would need to add headwalls to that that isn't currently identified in the upcoming projects?
I don't know because I'm trying to get a list of the roads, the packages as they're doing it. Kevin's sending them to me. And that's all I'm doing. I mean, if it's looks like it's got a good bottom and a good headwall on it, I'm leaving it. If it's three quarters filled up and and damaged on the end of it, that's the ones I'm picking to to replace. Talking about the legacy money, the only problem I have with with that is we were told that that was coming back to help support equipment like this loader I just bought and all. So, I mean, I'm I'm here.
I got you.
I I I know stuff needs to be done and I'm being very picky about what we do. I went out yesterday and looked at Hartsock, looked at every every road that was in this. Of course, some of them, we've already got all of it. But there's a couple of pipes on Hartsock that need to be tended to. One on Cheverie Circle that needs to be tended to. But like I say, I, no, I'm not, I'm not just going out and changing out everything. If I can get 15 to 20 year life out of it, which that's about the life of that pavement almost, you know, I'm leaving it. So y'all help me out.
That's all I'm asking. I just need the board to help us to just know what they want to do. Y'all, y'all know exactly how you'll move.
And like I say, there was miscommunication, however, but I was under the assumption that in 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 my doing it before, before I ever knew it wasn't covered under Michael. I I'm still, I'm not changing out everything. I'm changing out just what I know needs to be changed out.
And Mr. Evans, if there's miscommunication on meeting that day, I apologize. We had so much going on that meeting. And and when I told you that they critical, I thought that's what you understood.
And that's that's what I've been doing on all of it, even from the get go.
That's necessary critical for headwall being placed on a culvert. Continue on. We got to do it if we're replacing it. But, you know, just be mindful that some of this is not being reimbursed. That's that was our whole conversation.
Right. Our initial request was that we move the legacy monies as they come in to Road and Bridge in North General. Then we went more specific to just culverts and headwalls. So I apologize, Johnny. I shouldn't have let the conversation get that specific. I was just looking for means, and it doesn't have to be just that. It could be brush cutting, whatever you think you need to help these projects along, you know, and for the road department.
Well, and my my budget can't handle these pipes that are going to need to be changed out.
Right.
Now, in in a lot of the areas, like we said, when we went through with Michael, we've got them taken care of. But there's still some out there that's going to have to be tended to.
That Michael and Sally hasn't covered?
Yes.
Right. And that's what we're doing. Yeah, he's doing everything no matter who's covered it. Johnny's, Mr. Evans is doing a great job.
I'm like y'all. I'm I'm after this paving's done, I'm not going to sit back and this road fall in. And y'all look at me. I mean, it ain't going to happen because like you said, it aggravates me when we pave something here in town and know nothing about the city. They they have same issues we do, but you pave it and then they cutting it. I I don't want to see that. The people out there in the public ain't going to want to see that. So I'm trying to handle that as we go.
Mr. Griffin, you have something?
I just want to confirm. I was shut down from doing headwalls for Mr. Evans. You said misinterpreted. I did not misinterpret that.
No, 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 no.
I was informed I was shutting down for two months for Hurricane Sally money to come to fund the rest of the headwalls and culverts.
I think.
As a company owner, there's got to be a better plan.
And I and I apologize, Mr. Evans, if there's any.
I didn't misinterpret it for nothing. That's the phone call I got.
Listen, I went, I never had a conversation with you. I apologize to Mr. Evans if I had a misinterpretation to him and Mr. Parker in that meeting. Our meeting was just as we discussed that we're going to do everything that was critical or on a PW. And then on Hurricane Sally, whenever Hurricane Sally fired back up, then you had the 130 or whatever to do on Hurricane Sally. So the communication, the miscommunication wasn't on your part. The communication that you got delivered was a miscommunication in that meeting with Mr. Evans that delivered the message to you.
So I'm not shut down for two months waiting on funding for Hurricane Sally?
You're working at Mr. Evans' discretion. On what he needs to do, critical culverts he needs to do.
So if he called, I can go back to work because my interpretation, I was shutting down from the phone call I got.
Whatever the critical.
Who did that come from that I was shut down?
It comes from that meeting, but it was a misinterpretation. The meeting was. Who made the decision to move? Nobody made the call to shut you down.
So why did I get it all?
Mr. Chairman, we're addressing an item that's not on the agenda that had been requested to be presented, is not in compliance with our public participation policy.
And I think somebody will reach out to to the contractor and, you know, address his concerns.
We we met and discussed situation. And I think one of the biggest takeaways I had that was positive was the fact that we need to improve on our communication with each other. Other words, you know, having a good work plan and and follow through with that work plan. But if we see something happening that could affect that, let's all sit down together. Because I think that's where the the little shortfall came. And it's not, I won't say little, but but that's where it came. So we have that in place and we plan on doing that from now on. That way, everybody's on the same page and we don't overlap or miss something. We're all on the same page. I think that's going to be huge for the future. So that's what we're doing.
So somebody's going to reach out to the contractors as it is now, where they've been temporarily shut down, as they call it. We're going to readdress moving forward in a very near future, correct?
Yes, sir. And that's, I think, that's what the chairman's.
Trying to get accomplished here.
Assess assess today.
And in addition to that is, we're going to start holding some kind of regular scheduled meeting.
That's right.
With these contractors so we're all on the same page throughout.
That's beneficial for everyone.
It is.
Okay. So move forward on the critical culverts that Mr. Evans thinks. We're going, we're going to continue to move forward and we just need to track of what we spent thus far on our culverts, our headwalls. And maybe a monthly report from him of what he's spending.
And apparently a tractor from what he just said.
Well, we already, we told him buy a loader that, we was going to pay for the loader, Mr. Evans, out of, out of your funds that was from your hourly rate for stock, moving the stockpile at for Hurricane Michael. So your loaders took care of. I didn't want you to worry about that, but I was going to try to address that till we finish this, this. This conversation. Well, I got, I got enough irons and fire now till we finish this one. But so is that the way that you, y'all?
As long as everything that he's anticipated is taken care of, then we can use the legacy monies on the pipes. I'm good with that.
Or or tree trimming or whatever.
Whatever, whatever he feels necessary.
Okay. What monies do y'all? Y'all want a monthly report of of what we spent thus far versus what the legacy is bringing in? And then whatever that remainder balance is, do you want a monthly report from Mr. Parker of what monies we have left? So you, so you know what's what's left to do to finish the headwalls and?
I would like at least an original.
What what's left in there from legacy?
Well, yeah, I mean, what we've already spent out of it and and how far we got to go.
We just got some more legacy monies in, right?
That's what we're talking. Yeah, it's coming. That 600,000 has been approved the first of the week. It's been obligated. So we've already started requesting R F Rs. Should be fast. So I'm still going to say 30, 60 days, but that's fast.
That's fast for me. Yeah. So anyways, yeah.
Monthly is not going to be adequate. To 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 make a decision like that, I mean, we don't even, you you can spend a lot of money in a week. I mean, you've got them numbers already generated. Is that correct, Kevin? Your staff is, keeps that generated? On on more than a monthly basis, I know.
Typically, when we get an invoice, that invoice is processed right then and goes into our tracking for that road zone. It also goes into an R F R, Request for Reimbursement, to D E M. So, yeah, we've got, and I can pull it by contractor. I can pull it by work type. Generated. Was this a pipe replacement? Was this?
I just want to know what we what what we have paid for that's not reimbursable.
Okay, that's easy enough. That's why they're working out.
So then we know how much of that legacy money that we can spend.
We'll get that reported out by next Wednesday. You should, that should be very simple. Get that to you by last Wednesday and you'll look to see what you got coming in legacy. If the numbers are are far enough apart where we feel comfortable moving in the next 30 days, we'll go it. If not, we'll call special meeting. That jump us out.
Yeah, I mean, that's that's all I'm asking. That's that's why we're going to hope now. There won't be no more discussions that we have.
If we can wait for the next meeting, I'm good. I would just like to know. You can't.
The whole board is going to make that decision.
Don't misunderstand, Mr. Chairman. We're we're very thankful.
I know, no.
You've done a great job.
I'm not mad.
Continue to do that. I mean, I don't think anybody's sitting here criticizing you.
No, no, I guess. I'm just looking for a means that we can proceed with our projects and.
Be beneficial for everyone and be able to pay for it.
I'm not, I'm not mad at it in the world. I understand what you're saying. And if I was in y'all's shoes, I wouldn't know the same thing. But I'm telling you guys that that when you're spending millions of dollars that you know you're you may potentially not going to get reimbursed or not going to get cash flow on 428. It keeps chipping out. Oh, yeah. And that's what I don't want to do. That's why, that's why I don't want.
We want to help you sleep.
But the thing is, is I want the board to be aware of what's going on. There's never no decision made of malice or ill will. It's strictly the.
Well, this is new to all of us, I think. And and it takes a big, a big pile of cash to keep everything going. I think everybody understands. But I also think.
The roads that we've already agreed on and the roads that we're putting out, I mean, those right there, you know, that that should be the first priority to have them taken care of and then we'll follow up the next one.
We'll, we'll, we'll move forward. And this is the way I want, that I I I'm assuming the pleasure board is, and correct me if I'm wrong. We're going to move, just as we straightened Mr. Evans the other day, the meeting that that we're going to move forward with the the projects as is. If it's on a PW, replace it for a headwall right then. And if he deems it critical, replace it right then. And then we're going to get a worksheet put together with what our cash flow is from legacy versus what we're spending against the legacy funds at that non, non captured culvert. Is that, is that, is that the plan for the board?
I would think the majority of them would be captured in the actual worksheet itself. It's just some that are found along the way that on either.
None of these that are left were captured. These are ones that's aged out. The ones we're replacing now for these roads are aged out. Now, I I can capture them under the hurricane, under our paving project. I can, I can catch them there. That's not a problem. But understand, when I get to the end, if I got a million dollar budget to pave all these roads and I've spent 800,000 doing headwalls and pipes and design and permitting and all that, I got 200,000 dollars left. Y'all have got to come back and make up the 800,000. So I I can capture it and say that that's, we did this work so we could pave this road. That's eligible work. But it doesn't increase the amount of money we're getting to do that, right?
Because it's 428.
That's right.
Yes.
We're 12 million dollar budget. Chairman, I was like, why did you that come to the end of it? And I was like, let's go back, let's go back to the meeting.
I think we all knew that because of of the cash flow issues and and, I mean, we wasn't going to go in there and borrow no money to pay interest on it.
That was the instructions y'all gave me.
Yeah. That has to change.
So is everybody on the same sheet of music? And now, take that as a duration, even that sheet of music rather could lead into an open running the budget.
I just want the whole board, I'm just to know that. I'm just curious as to how far that 600,000 dollars is going to go to.
I'll be one of the.
You already know you had that money. I can tell you that.
That's true. That's gone. I'll tell you, that money was never bounced out.
So we've, we've got to find more money to go finish.
Guys, I'm working the pleasure board and we're going to move forward that the board recommended with all the critical culverts. And 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 continue to balance budget, give you project worksheets, let you know where we're at on the on the monies. And we'll, we'll discuss it next meeting or if we see that it's dire straits, I'll call a special meeting just so y'all can discuss it with me and tell me how to move forward. Is that good? Is that good?
That's good.
Okay.
And I thought Kevin was going to be short.
No, I knew this one was going to be short. I knew we needed three or four recesses for us.
Well, I was actually going to ask, request a workshop on it. Because, you know, I was just trying to, Kevin knows that and Jeff knows that.
Well, if y'all would like to just hold a workshop on this and then Mr. Parker, whatever you want, whatever the pleasure board is.
I'm I'm satisfied with this.
I do. I do as well. I, I just want to make sure that we're communicating with everybody involved.
And I think that was our fail.
I like that. I mean, I like.
And a lot came out of our meetings this week. So.
If everybody knows what the game plan is, everybody's on the same team. We're all on the same team. We're all trying to accomplish the same thing.
Well, the rules kept changing for so long. The rule changes every day.
That hadn't stopped.
That's the hardest part.
And the only time you can discuss it is when we're all sitting here together. That's, you know, that's the. The legislature likes that for everybody but themselves.
Did, uh, did we approve going out to bed?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going on down my list.
We'll have to ask Grecia.
We need to approve the advertising. I'm going to say we did.
Back on the agenda.
Let's go to hazard mitigation. The hazard mitigation we're talking about today is the home buyout program. We still have not received the approval, the package, application package to be signed by the chairman. Last month, y'all approved him to do that when it did come in. What I'm asking y'all to do today is I need to put out the bid to do the home demo, asbestos surveys, and asbestos abatement.
Do we have to do the asbestos surveys and abatement?
Yeah.
But it's 100% cost.
Yeah, it's all in the budget.
Yeah, we we can capture that because whenever Rick Scott made the phone call to D E M and had their, our D E O and had our money put into the H M G P buyout from the D R, how did, D R money? Uh, it's 100% reimbursed. So we're, we're good.
And and it's in our budget to do this work.
And we've got some money that's that can do that.
Absolutely.
That's ready to do.
We've done homes in Marana, Bluntstown, all over. And it's a process. It's a famous process. It's got to be done.
Motion to approve. Shall move.
I have a motion to approve. I have a second. I have a second. Any discussion? So this is just home demo. We're going to pick it up and haul it off, earn it, whatever?
Yeah, it'll go to a C and D landfill.
Okay.
The place to be level, place to be grassed, and it becomes county property and never to be sold.
Just as care is.
Yep.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing that, all favor I? All opposed. Motion carries. Did you get that whole motion?
I know poor Steve is there. He can pop one right now.
The Michael, and I know we've already talked about a couple of things on that. Our meeting yesterday reported that we have processed 19.6 million dollars. I think we've actually received somewhere around 17 million dollars. They have approved the 12 and a half percent cost share. And we talked about that a couple of months ago that they were approving that. That money is actually coming to us now. That's about 2.4 million in that range. Sally, we talked about kind of where we are. Some of those projects, with exception of the road projects, are going through well. We've gotten, our culverts are in there and they're backed to us. They're actually mitigation now on the culverts. I talked about that. One thing we've looked at in in hazard mitigation with FEMA, you get to spend money based on what it costs you to repair this building for future mitigation projects. Yesterday, Mr. Massey and the staff at the Ag Center, we met to look at what we could do there to future mitigate damages there. If you remember, we've already done the roof. We've already done windows and doors. So we've talked about doing some shuttering for the for the windows and doors. We talked about doing some waterproofing on those. We've talked about doing some waterproofing on those. We've talked about rebuilding that west door, that short wall there. Put a wind rated door, whatever it takes to build the wall to hold that door. We're getting some quick and dirty estimates on theirs. We're looking at redoing the complete drainage system all the way around the Ag Center. From catching all the gutter drains to getting them out to the ditches. And if you remember, now that y'all bought the property, it actually gives us access to that ditch on the east side of the Ag Center now. So that, we'll look at that. That drain's going that way, going to the other ditch, catching some of that in front. We can't do anything on a pavilion building, but in front of that pavilion, there's a ditch that carries that water from the Ag Center. We're looking at maybe paving that and putting in kind of a valley paving so to get that water out of there. So putting all that together in the next couple of weeks and see.
Couldn't we? And I'm by no means an engineer, but couldn't you put some culverts in there and just bury them, rather than having that open ditch that, I mean, you can't park in it? You can't even walk towards it because the water's headed that way and it gets so dang wet out there? And couldn't you...
You could, but you'd have to put inlets all through because that water's sheet flowing that way.
That's correct.
So you'd have to valley it to that.
Which would create the same problem?
Right.
Okay, all right.
So yes, and that's something they've considered, all of that, all the way around.
The door on the west side, there's nothing saying that we can't change the size of that door.
Oh, no. It's that whole wall.
Open.
That whole wall with a hurricane rated door, preferably wide enough they can get equipment in there.
Yes.
And tall enough.
Who's doing that, Kevin?
We're putting together the package now for hazard mitigation.
And I ain't a big fan of French drains, but... That's one where you could still have and have all your parking and everything on it too.
Gotta pop it somewhere.
Yeah, they function good to start with.
Yeah.
You gotta remember.
Good job, Alan. A friend of mine said I'm not a big fan.
All right, thank you. Cover that.
One thing outside the door.
We actually, and I wanna take it, I know y'all just discussed that about not raising taxes. Make sure we all understand that. I think we do. You covered that well.
Or lowering taxes.
Or lowering taxes. You can raise it. They don't care about raising it. You can't lower it.
We care about raising.
Yeah, well, that's true. Right now, I'm gonna tell you, that's for two years. Because what it says is you'll do it on the report you do for that year. Your quarterly, we do quarterly reports for that year, and in there is what your tax rate is, what you're generating. The second year, it'll be the same thing. This is a, it goes through December of twenty-four. So the third year, I'm thinking we're gonna be out of it. We'll be identifying our projects, closed it out. I'm thinking probably by the third year, you'll have it closed out. But it could be for three. That was a question I know we had, was could we do the rollback rate and how long would it be?
Read that ad, there's a whole lot of maize there that shouts. It's very great.
So we're a long way. Our first report, Lucas, is it August? Mid-August is our first report of what money we've already gotten. So we'll start having them submit some type of plan, much as we did the CARES Act. We'll do the best we can for what we have at that point. That plan will change, I can promise you. But you gotta have something to get it started. Let's talk a little bit about budgets and cost, contractor cost, engineering cost. We've gone back and forth as trying to reduce costs that we're putting out. Several things has happened. We started this, if you'll think, our first bid that we got on those four roads was double your budget. We like to all just stop. We were to the point, you're about to shut down, make the decision we're not gonna do this, send the money back. Because you can't double that budget and y'all take the rest of it. We made some changes, put out a bigger group, several things came into play. That first one, you know, came in right at budget. Now, we're a little bit under budget. We're gonna even try to do some more, more design changes to reduce some of these costs.
Even more.
Even more. So our goal is still to get this under budget. Because you, remember, your budget's got to include everything. So when I say we're coming in at budget, that means the total, but you still got a bunch of costs out there that are really not there yet. So we're still working on that to get that down. We talked about engineers and contractors reducing rates. What we want to say today, I think, is leave the rates like they are today. Reduce the scope of work to that or more. A good example on ditch digging, where we'd have a road zone based on the estimated number square, or linear feet that was out there. What we've done is we've taken road zones and gone out and physically marked with flags what I want that contractor to dig. They do that, they do the outfalls, go to another road. We reduced, one work zone, we've done that in now eighty-six percent. We're saying the balance of that work is either already been done by Forsen County Labor, Johnny's crews, or that ditch is gonna need to be designed during the construction process, it's gonna be dug anyway. So we're trying to reduce what we're doing right now on that side of the house to reduce that cost to get it back in budget. It's a balancing act we're doing. One day, like I said, we're ready to shut down shop and send it back. And now, we can kinda start seeing it coming down and do it. Because last thing the chairman and I and Mr. Madison want to do is recommend stuff and not let y'all know we're that much over budget. So it's a struggle. It's an everyday struggle. That's a discussion we have on most ever project, probably every morning.
I wanna make sure that nobody thinks that I'm ungrateful for y'all. And I know it's not an easy task. Just sometimes the path, the path to get there is a little bit different between all of us. It's fine, but we all have the same goal. And I am.
We did. We made some errors and discussions, and we're gonna go out this week. We've had a lot, we've had a lot of meetings with contractors, with staff, with commissioners, trying to figure out what we did wrong, what we did right, what we need to do to fix it. This is the moving target. I'll say nobody in the world's ever done what we're trying to do right now.
Doing a hundred million dollar project off of this sixteen million dollar budget. And balancing. Trying to balance them up. Or two hundred million dollar project.
The Smiths got talked about nineteen million dollars in Michael money. Probably in the next two months, you're gonna exceed your normal annual budget of what we've done in Michael. Because we're still, and not just Michael. You know, you've got COVID, you've got CARES Act, you've got SALLY, you've got all these disasters and the new American Rescue Act. We're getting close to chairman's favorite word he said one day. We're at a quarter of a billion dollars out here in money that's generating and causing problems, if you will, this growing problem, in addition to their everyday life, you know?
It's still gotta go on.
Still gotta go on. They're still doing that.
It is.
And then they're having to deal with this as well. So it's, uh, it's big. But at the end, the end result's what we're after.
And I think the biggest thing, Kevin, and you said it, communication. We gotta be talking to everybody. I don't know how you do that. Maybe at midnight or whatever, but it's gotta be done.
We, uh...
Kevin, I might want to go ahead and give an update on the permitting.
Oh, thank you. I did have that in my notes. Huge taboo it was. We got from Elizabeth Thor, the head over DEP Northwest District, a sample letter, a draft letter to us. We've reviewed that letter, we've added some stuff, and we felt like we don't have to permit these roads. If the county can make a decision, this road does not need a permit, based on there's no wetting impacts. What we need, though, is a letter from her, from DEP, saying your project does not require a permit. You know, all of it is down the road. So we've gotten that letter, draft, we've sent it back. Mr. Mason and I were gonna try to have a call with her yesterday. That didn't happen. Hopefully tomorrow, first of the week, we can get back to that. So we're expecting, because I didn't, I never got to the paving. We're on this. We're expecting to have that letter next week. August the third is our first notice to proceed on those paving projects. We're gonna back up one day, the week prior, and do the pre-con meeting with GAC, that contractor. So the permitting's coming. I don't think we have a problem getting those no permit required letters. It's just the wording from them to us.
And that wording is to appease DEM and FEMA?
Ultimately FEMA.
Like it's on the FEMA.
Because they think the Corps, they wanna see the Corps permit. That's the only thing they know how to say. I don't see the Corps permit.
The letter was, and we got a verbiage, we got a letter from, the letter would suffice for instead of a permit.
In the old days, we would get that letter from the Corps.
Yeah. We almost had to work it out to get before the Corps decided to, or they just banned Corps in December the twenty-first. We were very close getting that letter.
So now, but we're gonna go back to the Corps pretty quick, so.
No, no, no. We'll get it for everyone. This will take forever. Way I read it is that if the water management agrees that there was no permit required, then that would suffice with DEP.
Yeah, and we're getting that is fairly quick. Those are very good turnaround.
All right.
I'm sorry, I taught way more, and I apologize to my night takers.
Board, y'all need ten minutes real quick, before we get on to the rest of this? I just need just a minute.
Thank you.
And that kind of hinders our, our plans of doing these two-year turnovers, so.
Well, and some of the stuff that I've asked Billy to research on it, it's the serviceability of it. But it's, it's just where stuff is, it's difficult to service. So, and then parts for it too, just...
I sure don't buy something that's gonna be a headache that we know we're going in to get a headache. We got enough headaches that it's not attributed to none of our fault, but let's don't be our fault with a headache.
Right, but these, these are all rigged out, just like our other ones. They have, uh, the, uh, stampede bodies with the high lift gate. They have, uh, panel hitches on the back, drop axles on them.
You got two that you're ready, that you're ready to get rid of, right?
Yes, sir, I got two that's, uh, I think they're O-sixes that we need to surplus out.
I'll make a recommendation that we purchase the two, uh, with the Cummins engines in them. And then, and then Johnny, you can reach out to your, to your vendors and see if you can locate a couple more, maybe for next month or something.
When do you have, you got, when does next Jay and Wood sell?
September the twenty-first through the twenty-third.
Perfect, give them, give them out there?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, perfect. Almost like it's planned.
Sometimes it looks like that. And so, four, you just get to.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's working the clerk, finding, finding the money.
But that was part of his budgeted stuff.
No, sir.
Alright, we gotta, we gotta work on that, so. Do I have a motion to approve the two trucks? What's the amount of the trucks, Johnny?
They're a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars apiece.
Hundred and sixty-eight, well, Mr. Chairman, that's a motion.
I have a, yeah, I have a motion to move forward, depending on us securing the monies and finding money. Alright, we'll work on that, I got a motion in second, we'll work on that, uh, next week. It's gonna try, this, this, this week going by. So, I have a motion in second, I had to purchase the two trucks from Truck Works for a total of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars. Times two. Depending on the ability for us to budget the money to road bridge.
Okay, and in saying that, these trucks ain't gonna sit long, they're sitting built, so.
Well, call, tell them, yeah, call them.
The only other thing I have, I knew...
Motion in second, any other discussion? Do you agree with that, Mr. Jordan?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Alright, I got a motion in second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all favor I? All opposed, motion carries.
And a motion to surplus?
Uh, I need a motion to surplus the two tra- O-six...
Two O-six Mack.
Mack trucks. Put them in the sale for September.
Yes, sir. Hey, also on there, that loader we got, so the old loader we have, I'm gonna surplus it too.
Any, uh, let's just do this, any equipment, cuz you may find some other stuff that you need to, that you did. Any, uh, surplus, any equipment that Mr. Evans finds necessary for Public Works fleet, you can surplus, is that settled? Mr. Prequinn?
You really need to identify.
Identify by...
But we'll have another meeting in August.
Okay, well, if you, if you find something, we'll get it prepared, ready to go, and we'll approve it in August.
You've got trucks and stuff we're trying to...
Okay, I, I have a motion to approve, surplus of the two dump trucks and the loader, uh, uh, for the sale in September. Do I have them?
So, move.
I, I have a motion in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all favor I? All opposed, motion carries. Alright, what else, Governor?
On South Boulevard, I know we're looking at resurfacing it, uh, but right there, uh, on the east side of First Baptist Church, across the road, on, on South Boulevard, there on south side of the road, there is a big, uh, stormwater drainage system there. It's like a sixty-by-seventy-two elliptical pipe. In a gentleman's driveway there, before you get to Fifth Street, it's been, I'm losing dirt somewhere. I would like to look at getting somebody, a contractor, cuz we don't have any confined spaces that were certified. But get somebody to go down and inspect it, and if it's just something that I can, we can fix, um, because like the FEMA stuff, I don't want y'all to pave that road and then that give out, but...
Is that the first or second house there on this?
Uh, i- if you, if you're coming this way, when you go past Fifth, Fifth Street, it's that first house right there on that corner, Fifth Street and South Boulevard.
Is it something that we can ask the City of Chippewa to help us with? They used to have a camera and all.
Yeah, I don't know if they do, I will reach out to them, but, uh...
And they probably have somebody that is, uh, certified.
Okay, I, I'll reach out to them, but like I say, I'd really like to get it looked at. I'm hoping that it's something we can go in there and just patch, that everything else is good on it.
Y'all need to check anything to do with that, the one that we looked at, that they put the sidewalk over?
Yes, sir. Yeah, there about three-quarters of that pipe is out actually in the road. So, that's, that's my thing, I'd rather, if we could, go in there and patch it, backfill it, let it go, and not tear up the sidewalk or nothing, but I just, I really would like it checked out before we start researching.
Sidewalk over top of that, cuz that pipe wasn't doing good.
Yep. Thought I had it worked out, but Mother Nature told me different. But, uh, I will reach out to the City of Chippewa, but I was just, if we can't, I'd like to reach out to a contractor who can, go in there and inspect it and all.
What that would be within, uh, administrators?
Yeah, I don't know what that, it shouldn't cost much, I wouldn't think.
Mr. Mass, you can handle that.
Okay, nice, that's all I have.
Very good. Thanks, sir. County engineer, Mr. Cliff, now.
Good morning, sir, how you doing?
I'm good.
Man, I'll tell you right now, I am glad to see you up and moving. If nobody knows, Cliff had an ultimate scare, and man, what a issue that would have been.
Assassination attempt number three.
Congratulations. You're a good man down.
I should be good now.
Like a cat.
That's right.
What's going on, brother?
Uh, I got a few items for you, I'll try to go through pretty quick. The first one, I wanted to let the board know is that I had some discussion with Joe Taylor with the school board about the Brickyard Road construction project. And I think we have a plan together that's gonna work good for getting their, uh, alternate bid items. Just remember, there was three of them that we're doing, we're doing the loop, and then two additional right turn lanes exiting out. So, uh, we're taking bids later this month, and, uh, Mr. Taylor wants to be able to take them to the school board to get approval, approval from his board on the alternate bid items. And then, the idea would be that we'd build the loop first, which would be on the far east end of the school, uh, which kind of, kind of makes a big turn through the field, uh, and ties into the bus loop. We would build that first, and then that would allow us to close off the exit going out to Brickyard Road. Then the contractor would be able to build that exit, and then, uh, I'm sorry, the right turn lane. And then, uh, when they go to build the other right turn lane, they'll do it either on weekends or between nine o'clock and two o'clock, so.
Timeframes, this is not gonna hold this project.
No, not at all.
Look forward to it, great work, appreciate, pass the, pass the sentence on to Superintendent Taylor, appreciate the work of that.
Yeah, and it should work out, um, should work out fine for us to be able to, um, get their approval, and then bring it back before your next, uh, board meeting for, um, for y'all to award the contract, so.
Sounds good, those are good meetings.
Yep, so, uh, Sunny Hills, we're taking bids next Tuesday at one on, uh, paving Sunny Hills, and, uh, we'll be certainly bringing that for your, back to you guys for your next board meeting for approval.
How many miles is that?
Uh, I do not recall off the top of my head. Steve might be able to tell you, but...
Just under three, I do believe.
Did we cut it under three? Approximately three miles.
It's approximately three, eggs.
We're taking, uh, bids on Joyner Road tomorrow.
The culvert?
Yes, sir.
Replacing the culvert.
Yes, sir. And then, uh, I wanted to let you guys know, we had a good community meeting, uh, for the Greenhead Grade Road. Had quite a few people show up and several sign while we were there. We've got, uh, three locations that we're gonna be proposing some, uh, off-site ponds, uh, for additional drainage from Water Management District. Uh, I've had some initial discussion with them, and they've said, you know, basically, show us what you need, and we'll give you whatever you want. And so, we're gonna put, put together some legals and sketches for the three areas that we would like to put in some, uh, pond areas, and, um...
I remember on this road, we want to build the road. Our, our, our objective is to have a paved road through that, but we don't, we're not building I-ten. This is four twenty-eight dollars for spent, and I think you heard the discussion a lot about our budget.
It'll be similar to Rolling Pines Road, if you, if you seen the ponds on Rolling Pines Road, they're not very big at all.
I, I just wanted...
They're not.
Again, that was more of a statement for the entire board, and that we want the road paved, and Miss Benita wants the road paved. But we're not wanting to...
I'm not the only one.
Well, no, I know you're not the only one, but you definitely...
Oh, yes, you are.
You're definitely the most local one of the group, and we appreciate that, but...
She's the most helpful to you.
She know that.
Anyways, uh...
Not the only one. Steve wants to pay bad, too.
As far as...
Benita and Steve.
I don't think it's gonna be a big deal, I've had some preliminary discussion with them already. I don't think it's gonna be a problem at all.
Okay, alright.
And then, uh, we're probably, right now, probably about eighty percent complete with the plans on, uh, Greenhead Grade Road, and so, probably in the next thirty days or so, we should be finished. Hartford Boulevard, uh, we're at ninety percent done with, completed with plans. Uh, I need to arrange a meeting with, uh, Jeff and maybe the chairman to negotiate the, um, property swap between Spring Ridge and Washington County. You remember, there's five lots that, that Spring Ridge owns that we have to, um, would need to, um, uh, exchange for lots at the county house? And so, I've got the contact information for the guy that's the representative of Spring Ridge, and I need to try to get that done in the next couple weeks.
In order to get that turned straight down.
Yes, sir.
If we get that done, so I bring it to the board at the next meeting.
Okay.
Does the board get okay with that?
No, they haven't. Yeah, uh, the main thing we need to do, Jeff, is get them a map that shows where, what, where the county owned lots are, so that they can pick out kind of which lots they want to trade for.
It's a moving target, too. Yeah, I need to get to them sooner than later, cuz they're selling like hotcakes, so.
Okay, so, anyways, that's, that's something we need to try to get done before y'all's next board meeting, sounds like.
Yes.
I had a, uh, I reached out to some contractors for guard rail on Leisure Lakes Road. We had a discussion at, uh, your last board meeting about trying to get some quotes for guard rail on Leisure Lakes Road, and, uh, really could not get a guard rail company to give me a quote. They're mostly working for contractors right now, and they're behind on, um, the, uh, their orders, I guess you'd call it. And so, I don't know a good direction to go forward with the guard rail unless we just advertise, um, and see if we can get some contractors to maybe participate. Uh, but if you guys are okay with it, I'll put together a little bid package for guard rail. Uh, there'll be, uh, four end anchors and, uh, two sections of straight rail, and see if we can get some contractors to bid on it.
I'm sorry, Cliff, Mr. Chairman, do we have any other areas that we need guard rails?
Plenty of guard rails, and Mr. Evans is, I see it down all the time. I seen one on Earl Gilbert, or Orange Hill yesterday, right there at Earl Gilbert, there's, where, in the Pioneer, there, there's one damaged there. It would be great to have a continuing use contractor for it.
Yeah, I'd be happy to set it up as a continuing services contract, um, I can put that together.
Yeah, I'm just saying, you might get better bids than if you just put it out there, those two sections of guard rail.
Do you have to have a specific contractor to do that?
No, they haven't. Yeah, uh, the main thing we need to do, Jeff, is if, get them a map that shows where, what, where the county owned lots are, so that they can pick out kind of which lots they want to trade for.
It's a moving target, too.
Yeah, I need to get to them sooner than later, because they're selling like hotcakes, so...
Okay, so anyways, that's, that's something we need to try to get done before y'all's next board meeting, sounds like.
Yes.
Um, I had a, uh, I reached out to some contractors for guard rail on, uh, Leisure Lakes Road. We had discussion at, uh, your last board meeting about trying to get some quotes for guard rail on Leisure Lakes Road, and, uh, really could not get a guard rail company to give me a quote. They're mostly working for contractors right now, and they're behind on, um, the, uh, their orders, I guess you'd call it. And so I don't know a good direction to go forward with the guard rail unless we just advertise, um, and see if we can get some contractors to maybe participate. Uh, but if you guys are okay with it, I'll put together a little bid package for guard rail. Uh, there'll be, uh, four end anchors and, uh, two sections of straight rail, and see if we can get some contractors to bid on it, um...
I'm sorry, Cliff. Mr. Chairman, do we have any other areas that we need guard rail? Plenty of guard rails, and Mr. Evans is, I see it down all the time. I seen one on Earl Gilbert, or Orange Hill yesterday, right there at Earl Gilbert, there's, where, in the Pioneer, there, there's, there's one damaged there. It, it would be great to have a continuing use contractor for it.
Yeah, I'd be happy to set it up as a continuing services contract. Um, I can put that together.
Yeah, I'm just saying, you might get better bids than if you just put it out there, put those two sections of guard rail.
Do you have to have a specific contractor to do that? I mean, it's, it's not special equipment to, to, to hammer the poles down and all? Is that something that...
So...
There's no special equipment. It, it just needs to be built to spec.
Okay.
And the spec is a moving target because it changes as, as testing and technologies change, so...
You, you, typically, you would want a contractor that has their, um, that's, you know, DOC, DOT certified for maintenance of traffic. But other than the maintenance of traffic itself, there's really not a lot of, um, DOT requirements of any sort, and these are, these are county roads, but we would certainly like, especially on Leisure Lakes Road, we would want to make sure that they include maintenance of traffic, um, you know, with their cost, because it's in, you know, a nasty curve.
Yeah.
And, uh, when they're driving post, they'll have the truck, well, they'd be partially on the roadway when they're driving post, and so they'll have to be DOT certified for maintenance of traffic, but other than that, there's no certifications, really.
Yeah. Yes, Mr. Evans? I think some of those y'all talking about were covered under Michael. They got damaged. I know one that, Pioneer and Orange Hill.
Well, we got that one at Alfred as well.
It's already in, on Orange Hill, yes.
On, on Alfred Road?
Yeah, there's been some that's, uh, that's covered under Michael, if you're crazy.
Well, that Alfred's gonna have to be addressed pretty quick anyway, 'cause we fixing to pay that one.
Well, I don't appreciate it. Actually, on Clayton, too. I wouldn't mind looking at it as a continuing use contractor.
Okay.
We can use, Mr. Evans can use... Unless it's fixed. Oh, yeah, yeah, I know what I'm talking about, yeah.
All right.
You don't mind with that, get it?
I'll put something together for you. Um, Cypress Springs Road, the survey's completed on Cypress Springs Road, and we're starting on design right now. Uh, we're working for the Water Management District. Um, we're, uh, probably maybe two months out from being completed with design, but we also have a, a pretty good bit of dredge and fill permitting that has to be done on the project, so it's gonna take some time, but, uh, just want to let you guys know at least that the survey's done, and we're getting started on design right now.
Have they found money to pay it?
I don't know. I, I know that, uh, they pulled the trigger on getting the design and permitting done, so I'm assuming they have money to pay it, but I, I, I can't tell you. Um, my goal is just to get the, uh, permits in hand and get the design completed and, and, uh, hand it, hand it over, so... And then on, uh, Williams Road Bridge, we're in permitting on it, and we are just about, pretty close to being done with, uh, design on John's Way. And soon as we get the design completed, we'll be submitting for permitting on John's Way.
Didn't we, didn't we have some funding to pave Williams Road from, from, from Cove Road to Seventy-Seventh? Wasn't that part of something?
Not that I'm aware of.
It's one of your modes of payment, so...
Okay.
Yeah, yes.
Now, part of the design for the bridge, we're putting in a, a hundred and four-foot, uh, concrete bridge, but part of the design for the bridge is a, a low water crossing that's just west of the bridge. And so, um, the watershed is so big going to the north, uh, goes all the way up into Alabama.
Yes.
And so the watershed is so big that just the bridge itself won't handle all the flow, and so we've got a low water crossing. Low water crossing will definitely have to be paved. And so it's, uh, same as the other low water crossings that we've done, they have the ribbon curve on both sides. It dips down and then comes back up, same, same kind of gig, and so that's, that's what we're permitting.
Okay.
So, that's, uh, that's the big items that I had, uh, and I'll be happy to answer any kind of questions that you guys have. Uh, and we, we laid out stormwater for your pond down there.
Is that at Culpeper?
At Culpeper, I think Johnny's good on it, I think.
Sir, Joyner Road is this Friday, bids?
Yes, sir, tomorrow. Yes, sir.
All right.
So that's all I got. Most of you guys got questions?
I think you, Cliff, thank you doing good. Yeah, glad to see you up rock.
Yeah, yeah, me too.
All right, buddy. Mr. Administrator?
Well, you've already handled most of it.
Easy for you.
No, I got just a couple things. Uh, one I want to go ahead and cover first is the sale of, uh, county-owned property. And, uh, we have, uh, we've got five different purchasers. Uh, the first one is, uh, Perez and Blue Lake Trailer Park. Letters were sent to adjacent owners, no opposition to sale, assessed value of seventy-five-hundred dollars, and they offered seventy-five fifteen. Can I do all these?
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah, we can do it all in one.
Uh, the net, number two is, uh, James and Andrew Blackwood in Sunny Hills. Uh, the lots, two lots here, that both are assessed at eighteen-hundred. Uh, they've offered thirty-six-hundred for both lots, and letters were sent, and no opposition to sale. Number three is, uh, Lloyd, two lots in Sunny Hills. Assessed value of one lot was eighteen, and the assessed value of the other lot was twelve-fifty-five. They've offered assessed values for a total of three thousand fifty-five dollars. Number four is Rodriguez in Blue Lake Subdivision. Assessed value was three thousand. They offered three thousand, and letters were sent to adjacent property owners, no opposition to the sale.
Do I have a motion to move forward and sell? We got one more.
Oh, and, uh, this, this person, uh, Mr. uh, or Miss Raimy, a total of six lots in Sunny Hills. They were assessed at eighteen-hundred dollars each. They were offered eighteen-fifty for each lot for a total of eleven-thousand, one-hundred dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve the sale of listed properties.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all favor I?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Uh, next, item to surplus of trailer at Sodbon.
Yes, sir, we have an old FEMA trailer that's been sitting vacant for years. In fact, I don't think it was ever used. Uh, how many years has that been there, Johnny?
Oh, twenty fifteen.
I just...
Look at the title.
From the board, surplus the, the trailer, and we'll get it out of there.
I'll make a motion, we, we, I'll make this surplus property, we'll donate it out here.
No motion. And a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all favor I?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item is building department position request, Mr. Massey.
We are requesting to add a, a position in the building department to assist with the, the increasing, uh, volume of traffic that we're having. This would also allow us to, uh, utilize our part, our planning department a little bit better because we're splitting a planning person out with building. And, uh, we have researched the budget and the, uh, revenue generated from the building department funding this position as recurring funds.
No doubt. All right, salute. Do I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all favor I?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next is leave of time transfer, Mr. Massey.
Yeah.
Leave of time transfer.
Quick here, right here.
Yes, okay, sorry about that. Um, we advertise for the position of, uh, grants procurement person. We have made a decision. Uh, the interviewing panel did a great job choosing this person. They work in another area of the county, and, uh, what we're requesting today is that, uh, we transfer, uh, leave seventy-three-point-two-five hours of annual and thirty-eight hours of sick.
Salute, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all favor I?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item is temporary position for public workers.
Yes, sir, this is the person that we, uh, went through, uh, I guess, career source for the grants, uh, to work on Hurricane Michael.
Yeah.
She's been down there for quite a while, uh, helping us, and her job is to input data from the green sheets that come in every day to keep up with our Hurricane Michael stuff.
Yeah.
And, uh, that grant's running out, twenty-third of this month, so we're requesting a, a temporary employee status down there to help us keep things moving, uh, at a rate of thirteen dollars per hour.
Is that something that you budgeted? I'll make a motion to approve that.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
That's right.
Motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all favor I?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Never should always put something at the end of the agenda, because then you pass...
Note for self. Fairly true. All right.
We already know about all this.
Uh, according to auditors, this is, and this is on here just for informational purposes only. Uh, our vouchers does not require board approval according to auditors or anything, but just, I ask for just keep on budget, just so you see what's going on.
Yes.
Is that good?
Yes, that's, um, and that actually is for June, so it's three million, six-hundred-ninety-three thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars and sixty-six cents.
And that baby's gone.
All right, so...
I'll also add, um, the question about funding the additional, um, supervisor of elections amount is in the sale of county-owned property, so we can use those files.
I'm good with that. I just, uh, I'm good with that, y'all good with that? Well, we gotta get the money.
They're, they're good, they're good.
I don't want to push that issue too much, brother.
This way, I'm not sending an email when I get that.
That's right. I, I, I completely follow.
Thank you, Father.
Yeah, I don't want to give that, that's what we are. All right, uh, Mr. Attorney?
Mr. Fuquay?
Attorney.
Don't have anything.
Don't have anything? All right.
My goodness.
Seeing that, Kevin. Let me say something. I got about to...
Say it, close.
You probably won't believe this, but...
Y'all killing each other, or else it's losing some weight.
We, we, I, I don't keep up with it. I just go, uh, but thank you for noticing. Mr. Massey and I didn't get to talk about this this morning to remind one another. We're, we're looking at the drainage problem on the backside of the complex here, um, in front of the ambulance bay. We're looking at doing roughly a thirty-six, forty-foot concrete pad with maybe a trench drain or a valley drain to get that water away from the building, away from that road. Uh, that'd be the first phase of what we're doing, and, and we want to put that out for bid this next week. It should be a short, couple-week thing and get, get somebody...
Add that to certain contract, uh, contractor we already have or no?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I think it's a little bit separate, but, uh, I, I would expect them to be right there.
Okay, I just, we need to get that done.
Yeah, a- and then the intent is then when we come back with the next phase, the paving and drainage actually right behind us, it'll all tie together.
It's horrible.
It's terrible. If we can't get that fixed, that's just the first part of a, maybe a two or three-part process. Commissioner Kent has agreed to hold off on that single part. We're talking about the concrete? Because he had, he had approached me about going ahead and getting that done, but we're looking, we're looking at coming all the way down in the back, getting that water to flow, but there's a little bit of drainage. And we had, held a meeting this past week with that ARC Center, so stay on that property. We're gonna want to put some type of little drainage area that flow to. So we're working together with ARC Center as we go on, but this, this is just, yeah, that proved it. We did get an email. I apologize, not read it, but, uh, Miss White keeps me going.
She keeps a lot of us going.
So if we can just prove that to go out and bid, we can get that this week.
Earn her tea.
That's it.
I'll make a motion.
Salute. Make a motion, Johnny.
Did we have to make a motion to put it out of bid?
Oh, okay. I'll say. That what the motion was for. I have a motion and a second for placing the, uh, drain, uh, con, the drainage, uh, structures out the bid for, and the concrete for EMS. Do I have a sec? I have a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all favor I?
Aye.
All opposed?
Bonita's been praying back there. I don't, motion carries. Talk to you around this.
Oh, the, when I called the manager back to tell him about the two trucks, he said they were, they had six, and all of them, he, he got the four. But, uh, he said one of them got brought back. He didn't know what kind of engine it had. How do y'all want me to just go with the two right now, or look at the other two maybe next month?
I think he doesn't know?
He, he's not sure what engine's in, in that. He has little defects on it.
We have to know before we make a decision, but...
Okay.
I mean, we still looking at funding. Maybe we can have a, uh, an, uh, another, because we don't want them to go anywhere, because we need them.
Right.
As part of the plan, ma- maybe we can have another board meeting or...
Do you want to approve up to three if it's got the correct engine? I would approve up to four, as long as they meet, uh, the engine. You got some work ahead of us. As long as they have the coming...
Right, the same spec as the two that we just got, we just approved.
I, I would, I would, if it's all right with Steve, I would make a motion that we give Johnny the authority to purchase up to four, uh... As long as they meet the criteria we want as far as engine type and, and the other... Can I have that form of motion? That I didn't hear. Okay, all right. I have a motion and a se, do I have a second? Motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all favor I?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, Miss Bonita?
So, I come to every meeting, and I don't have an intention to come up here and talk at every meeting, but inadvertently, there's always something that comes up, which kind of leads into...
So, so we're consistent with our public participation policy?
And that's what I wanted to address.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, I didn't know if you just, yeah, so we, we, we already had public participation policy, and we've already passed that portion.
Okay, so I want to be on the agenda, or at least have an item to, to talk about.
Just add it to Miss White. I'll be more happy discussing with, with that after the meeting. Where do you ask? All right. Do I have much to, Johnny?
Salute.
Mr. Johnny, you want to tell me anything?
I'll be with you after the meeting.
Okay.
It's over.
We're done.
We're done. I just hit the hammer. It's history. It's a little bite, pressure. Johnny?